Worried about the back pressure when they enter with, you know.
Good morning, everybody. It is Thursday, December 19th, 2024. This is a special meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. We are live in City Hall Commissioners Room, second floor. I'd like to call this meeting to order at exactly nine o'clock a.m. By way of introducing ourselves to the candidates here, we will do a roll call. Commissioner Mark Saunders.
Present.
Present.
Commissioner Suzanne Good.
Present.
Commissioner Bunky Markert. Your Mayor Stan Mills is here. And absent are Commissioner Ed Stranowski, Patrick, Commissioner Patrick Gossett, Commissioner Craig Thier. They were not able to attend today. With that, we still have a quorum and are able to formally conduct business today. The purpose of this special meeting is to, as noted in the agenda, twofold, conduct an in-person public interview with city solicitor candidate, Mr. Gregory A. Morris, as noted. And you will note that there is a support document embedded in the agenda with an action item report that has information in it that's relevant to this meeting. And the second purpose B of this meeting is that we may include an executive session for the purpose of discussing the qualifications of individual candidates for employment as an in-house city solicitor. Like to explain for a moment, or have Taylor explain the A and the B protocols here, why we have an in-person session in front of the public, and why we have a executive session for in-house attorney.
Yes. So ultimately, during this recruitment, we recruited for both independent contractors and in-house counsel as a city employee. So that would be someone who's actually an employee of the city. So today, we're interviewing Mr. Morris as an independent contractor. And then the executive sessions can be used for reviewing the qualifications of anyone that applied for the in-house counsel position.
Because in-house are considered a employee, and therefore falls under a certain exception for executive sessions.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much. So our protocol today, our process today for Agenda A, we're going to have the sole applicant for the independent contractor, the city solicitor, self-introduce himself. And then we'll go to questions by the Commissioners, and we'll rotate down and back and forth for Q and A session. We'll have allow for additional feedback at the end of the Q and A section by the candidate, and any follow-ups by the Commissioners. Then we will have, at the end of that session, we will have public comment at the end of Mr. Morris's interview. Three-minute limit, one time for the public. And then we'll go on to Agenda Item B, which is the executive session for the purpose of discussing qualifications of individual candidates, as noted on the agenda. Also, when we come back into public session, we will again allow an opportunity for the public to comment. So they'll have two opportunities. And then at the very end of this meeting, we'll talk about what the next steps are and what the timeline is. With that, we're going to go to Mr. Gregory A. Morris, who's the sole applicant for independent contractor. If you would, tell us about yourself and a little bit about perhaps why you're interested in this position here. And we'll give you the floor before we go to our own questions. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, my name is Greg Morris. I'm an attorney with Legoria Morris. We have an office in Dover and Georgetown. Just to give you a little background about myself, I'm born and raised from Delaware. I was raised in a farm just a little north of Smyrna, went to high school there, and then attended college at Westchester University in Pennsylvania, and then Delaware Law School. After that, I clerked for a judge in Superior Court in Wilmington for a year, and then took on various jobs during that time period. And I've been with Legoria Morris technically since 1999. We had another partner involved, but she went out on her own. But so it's been myself and James Legori. I recently moved to Milton. I lived in Dover for 30 years. It was compromised between my wife and I. She was from Milford. I was from Smyrna. We met in the middle. Plus, at the time when we moved there, I was still working in Wilmington and with four young kids. You know, it became taxing, so I wanted to work in Dover. So that's where we've been living for the past 30 years until, it'll be a year in January since we moved to Milton. Most of my practice, again, I submitted a letter in the resume to give you a background of what I've done. But as of, I believe, December 12th of this year, it's been 33 years I've been practicing as an attorney. Most of my practice during those 33 years have been more in litigation purposes, civil and criminal litigation, even though since at least 1995, I've assisted municipalities in a bunch of items, especially when I first started at Hudson Jones in Dover. They represented various towns, so I would cover all those things. But the main focus was the litigation aspect. Again, I'm 59 years old, so I'm on the back nine of my legal career. You know, I'm going to work for a while, and I have no intention to retire anytime soon. But I think I want to kind of refocus my practice a little bit, you know? For me, I'm in court every day, it seems like. And sometimes that gets old. You know, you sit there and you wait, and I have to be careful because I know it's public, but you sit and you wait a couple hours where the judge takes the bench. And so I made a decision a few years ago to see if I could, you know, focus more on the government aspect of it. So I've been involved in that. Again, our firm has been representing Bethany for over 15 years. And then when I decided I went to try another avenue as well, I took on the town of Camden, I took on the town of Daggsboro, I took on Bridgeville. I represented the Camden, Wyoming Sewer and Water Authority for a period of time. I did spend a short period of time with the Kent County Regional Planning Commission. I'd spent about six months there. I had to leave for personal reasons because of an issue, because my daughter was an employee there, and there was some friction. So I just thought it was best just to part ways with them, which is fine, was admirable. But I really liked that aspect of it, too. So when I saw the opportunity, I'm not going to lie, I was pretty excited. Again, I'm born and raised in Delaware, but this is where I spent my summers. In college, I worked down here every summer. I worked at, and it's sad to drive by it, but the shopping center where the old AMP store was there, I worked midnight shift stocking shelves for every summer that I was down here. So, you know, so when I saw it, I said, hey, it can't get any better than this. So I applied, and I'm hopeful you'll give me a consideration. I think I'll do a great job for you. I'm a straight shooter. I'm never going to pull any punches. Not going to, you know, sometimes you may not like what I'm going to say, but I'm not going to pull any punches with you, you know? If you have a question, I'll look into it. If I don't know the answer immediately, I'll get the damn answer pretty quickly for you. And, you know, with the other towns I represent, I think they appreciate my candor and my openness. And I think they know that I fight for the towns, because that's the job. You know, I don't represent any of you individually. I represent the town. So my job is to try to protect the town and provide legal advice to the town and things of that nature. So I'm excited. So I hope I get the opportunity. And then if you do, if you do consider me for the position, I promise you I'll work hard for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris. I'm going to start questions, and then we'll go around, if that's all right. And I'll state this, some of my questions, some of our questions might be a little illustrative, so that you can get to know us a little bit. And freedom of information is very important to us. Transparency is very important to us. We've been short on some FOIA things of lately. So Ann is our FOIA coordinator, but we look toward our city solicitor for advice, and frankly, proactive advice. And so we share future agendas to make sure everything's written right, that executive sessions are characterized, property, et cetera. But again, we've had, we've had a few failings lately. And as you know, and the public probably generally doesn't know, FOIA is entitled, what, 22, I think, of?
I think it might be 29, but I could be wrong.
29, maybe 29. It's in the state code, Freedom of Information Act. But as any lawyer would know, you can't really interpret and appreciate the complexities of FOIA unless you read Attorney General's opinions. And many are issued each year, and they become laws effectively. So if you would, just give us a little maybe preview of your knowledge of FOIA, how you operate, and anything you'd like to share with us.
Sure. Yeah. So FOIA is big these days, okay? I represent some towns where we have people or just, at times, I would say flood them with FOIA requests. But you can't ignore them. You've got to look at each one of them, make an assessment whether the information, one, whether the person who's making the request has the capability of making that request, and number two, as to what they're seeking, and then apply any of the exceptions that may apply. So I've dealt with FOIA a lot, especially with at least two of my towns. We've had a high influx of that. And I treat them seriously. Again, I, at least with the other towns, I have full contact with the FOIA coordinator, because that's who's ultimately responsible for it. But sometimes they say, hey, can you at least draft something for me? Or so if I give them a particular opinion, that there's an exception that doesn't apply. For example, one of the first ones is the person who's requesting the information, or they even a resident of the state of Delaware. Because we get a lot of those from companies. And if they're not, it's always been my opinion, they're not entitled to make a FOIA request. So there's certain things that hurdles have to be reached. But yes, I would not have a problem getting involved in that. I'm fully aware of the AG opinions. I'm looking them up all the time. The good thing with Westlaw, a lot of time, if you go into the Department of Justice website, it's hard to find, I mean, you find the opinions, but they really don't have a search menu like, this is the particular issue. You kind of spend a lot of time. But with what our firm uses, Westlaw, it actually can pull AG's opinions for me, rather than me spending hours looking for the Attorney General's opinions, because there are thousands of them. I mean, they must be issuing these things like clockwork, because I know a lot of people. That's a big item these days. People want transparency. And, you know, with FOIA requests, just because they seem to, if the request is reasonable, you're going to have to produce it. So I, you know, my position all the time is you err on the side of caution, so you don't get in any litigation aspect. If it's what you have to produce, you have to produce it. So yeah, I do have a lot of experience with that, and I think I could help anyone in the town to respond or to address any issues with this.
Thank you. Yeah, we definitely need somebody that's up to date on things. It seems of late that the Attorney General's opinions are, have varied from years ago, which has startled some of us. But of course, we want to follow the freedom of information the best we can. And you're right, you'd be working with the coordinator quite a bit. A lot of people don't know, Ann's the FOIA coordinator and has to log in and out and do all the research. It's a lot, a lot of work to be able to do that. And she does a great job, including attending an annual FOIA coordinators conference up in Dover. Thank you very much, Mr. Morris.
No problem, sir.
Bunk, Commissioner Markert?
Am I going down the list here?
Well, you can ask, I started out with an independent question, I think, but you can ask whatever you like.
I'll just go down the list. I mean, I think you've touched upon this. I'll ask just basically if there's anything you want to add or anything. But and some of these are kind of open questions.
Understood. I understand.
What do you consider to be the primary responsibilities of the city solicitor position? And how has your career prepared you to assume the duties of city solicitor position?
Yeah. So again, the duties of the city solicitors to represent the city of Rehoboth Beach. That's my obligation. I don't owe any personal obligation to any one of you. And hopefully, that doesn't offend any of you, but that's my understanding. I represent the city of Rehoboth. So, you know, based upon my experience of representing the other towns, you know, I'm a strong advocate. I would say I'm a zealous advocate on behalf of the towns I represent. I'm looking out for the best interest of them, trying to prevent problems, dealing with problems. Again, you can be proactive with things. For example, the FOIA, the matter. If you deal with it head-on rather than kind of fumbling a little bit, then the next thing you get is a letter from the Department of Justice saying, hey, someone's filed a complaint. Tell us why you didn't provide whatever. So if you can deal with the problem initially, you don't get, keep getting those letters. And I've been pretty fortunate with mine that maybe one or two complaints. But that brings me to another topic, and I don't mean to go off, but another big thing that's happening is with the Public Integrity Commission, dealing with those a lot more, too. People make complaints, so we have to deal with that. And I know the attorney, she recently left, and I think they have a new attorney. But with all my towns, in fact, with the town of Daggsboro, again, I deal with William Chandler, who's the mayor there. He's a former chancellor for the state of Delaware, brilliant guy. He, in fact, made a suggestion, which I agreed, that the lawyer will come to the town council or city council meeting to make a presentation. Because sometimes people don't know where the lines are, what you can do personally, and what you can't do. What comments can you make? What happens if you're out in a public setting, and there's three of you together? So all my towns have taken advantage of that. I don't know if you have. But the Public Integrity Commission is something that it's becoming pretty popular these days, and people making complaints. So sorry to add on to that.
Appreciate you standing on that.
We had Janet Wright do a joint meeting with the Lewis Council and us and members of the public. But Janet Wright's been gone five years or more or something. So yeah, we're familiar with that. But we also conduct an in-house FOIA slash ethics thing. So yeah, we find that very important. Did you have any follow-up?
No, not really.
You're very good. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
No problem.
Commissioner Saunders?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
No problem, sir.
So I'm the new guy here. This is my first week, really.
Don't beat me up too bad, then.
Well, I just want to share with you, when Mayor Mills interviewed me for the possible nomination, the one thing he asked me is, could I show up for the meetings? And I guess I'm going to pose that question to you in the sense that I know you have one partner, but you have other backup. I mean, you're going to have vacations, you're going to be sick, you're not going to be able to attend every meeting personally. Do you have someone else sort of as a backup?
Yeah, there's two other people in my office, my one partner, Jim Legori, and then a young female who works for us. I shouldn't say young, she'll probably be mad at me now. But Melissa Dill, who would be able to cover for me. And that was one of my questions initially when I met the mayor, is we walked in, I said, you know, will you be able to give me an idea of when the meetings will be, if I get the opportunity to represent the city? Because, you know, again, because of my litigation practice, most of my court cases have already been scheduled nine, 10 months out. However, if I get enough notice, I can bump those. Friday afternoons are usually not allowed at court. There's some criminal matters in the morning, so Friday afternoon's not going to be a problem. The workshop is where I'll have to make sure, whatever, if I can get all those dates, I can block those calendars off and say, don't start a trial on that Monday, or whatever. But yeah, but I anticipate being here unless there's some family medical issue, or just some, if I have an emergency hearing in a court, but I will have coverage to have someone there. But I will say this, I'm going to be the guy you see here, most likely.
Thank you. I indicated to you earlier that I would send you a calendar after this meeting. That would be a calendar of the Board of Commissioners' public meetings. Excuse me, so you can get an idea of what's on our plate from now into April. We've got a lot of meetings there. And the hiring language indicates that our regular Commissioners' meeting are the third Friday of the month at 2:00, and that's accurate. But it also inadvertently says our workshop meetings are the second Monday of the month, and that's not true. And it's very hard to explain unless you look at the calendar. You have to, to determine the workshop meetings, you have to start with the third Friday of the month, regular meetings, and count backwards to Mondays, and that's where it is. So the calendar will be forthcoming and very helpful to you.
And if I could just follow up, just so I'm clear about this. So most of those workshop meetings that are on Monday are the special meetings, or are they during the day?
Yes.
Okay. Because again, most of my town meetings with other towns are in the evenings, either 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock. So that shouldn't cause any problems.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Very good. Commissioner Good?
Good morning, Mr. Morris.
Good morning.
I noted, and I was pleased to see in your cover letter, you noted that you would only appear at council meetings, or in this case, commission, but same, same type of body here, if specifically asked. In your practice with Bethany Beach, Daggsboro, and the other towns, have you, has, could you give us an idea of the percentage of time that you've, that the town has felt it was important to have an attorney present versus the meetings where I guess maybe there was some follow-up with you afterward, when there were some issues, the council members, the Commissioners wanted to run by you?
Yeah.
That's my first question.
And that's a great question. So most of the towns, I appear at every meeting. However, there are certain times where, at least with the smaller towns that I represent, they really may not have anything on the agenda. So they know they're not going to need me to some degree. But I also think, so it's, at that point, when they make an assessment, there's really nothing of great circumstance on the agenda, that they may not need legal counsel, okay? And in those circumstances, they'll say, hey, Greg, we don't need you this month. That's, doesn't happen a lot, but it happens. But I think they also take into account, for my benefit as well, that they know they're at nighttime, so I could be home. So it's kind of a, you know, don't waste your time driving down here for a 20-minute meeting. Because sometimes these smaller towns, their meetings are done and over in 15, 20 minutes. So they were like, we don't want you wasting your time driving to Daggsboro, because there's not much on the agenda, and it's, you know. So I will say this, I put that in all my letters, and I have for each and every town, because there are circumstances that the town says, we don't need you, and that's fine with me, and just let me know. And usually, the agenda will come out, the way, at least with the other towns I deal with. And then the council people will look at agenda, or myself, and then there's, you know, a discussion whether they're going to add. And then that's usually when the town manager will send me an email and say, hey, Greg, we don't think, you know, I've spoken to the mayor, I don't think we're going to need you to come in. So I know usually about a week in advance, I'm not going to have to show up. So it does happen, doesn't happen a lot.
Okay. So I saw that in your cover letter, and we've had many meetings here that have gone on for hours and hours, where I believe, anyway, the presence of an attorney has not added value. And I've been told, would you agree that it's not, we're not legally required to have an attorney present at all meetings? It's more that it's a preference of the mayor, of the city manager, or someone in charge? You would agree with that statement?
I can't disagree. Each of my towns are run different ways. You know, you would think there was some continuity, but each town does their things in different ways. So yeah, you have the opportunity to, the council, the mayor, town manager can have an input, whether you want me here or not.
My other question, I apologize, also somewhat specific. When I saw that you've worked for the Camden, Wyoming Water Sewer Authority, and also you've done a lot of work for the town of Bethany, where, as you probably know, the South Coastal Plant runs its outfall onto the beach just south of Route 26. Do you have a lot of environmental, or do you have some environmental law experience? Because I do believe in early 2025 especially, that's going to be quite germane to this town.
Yeah. I can tell you that I've represented the Camden, Wyoming Sewer and Water Authority. We've not had to deal with any environmental impacts, or any litigation, or anything like that. The town of Bethany, again, without going in detail of providing what we've done for them, or not have done, I mean, sometimes those issues come up. Do I have a great authority in that area? No. But is it something I could probably find answers to if I need to? Yes. The world we live into now is, our computer provides so much access. So if I don't know the answer to the question, I normally can find it in our world of legal research, Westlaw, and, you know, the day of going into a law library, pulling out a card and finding the book, it's not that way anymore. And thankfully, I've stayed on top of it. Some of the older attorneys are old school, and they just have their young people do it. But I do all my own research, always have. So if there's a particular area I may not be strong in, I'll still get the right answers. And even if that means reaching out to other people, you know, I'm a member of the International Municipal Attorneys Association. You can send stuff out in a forum setting. Hey, I've got this issue. Can anyone provide me any assistance? We've taken advantage of that. So there's plenty of avenues out there that if I don't, not. And again, the best way I can put it is, most of my career for 33 years is civil and criminal litigation. And they kind of refer to us as a jack-of-all-trades, master at none, because I litigate everything, okay? Doctors, land disputes, contractors disputes. So I have to familiarize myself with a lot of different areas, and I'm capable of doing it. But that doesn't mean I'm an expert in bankruptcy. First of all, I've never handled anything bankruptcy. But that's just an example. But if I don't know the answer to it, I will get the answer to it, and it will be correct.
Thank you. Maybe adding on to that one question about primary responsibilities of the city solicitor. I met a gentleman the other day, I can't remember, it's from Daggsboro, Delmar, or something, but somewhere. And he mentioned that their solicitor serves their council, and also serves their planning commission, and also serves their board of adjustment. I don't know which.
That's not true at all.
It is, maybe not those towns, but whoever I talked to said his town did that.
Yeah.
And we don't do that. We have, up until several, up until five or six years ago, we had a city solicitor that also served the dual role of attorney for the planning commission. And then as far as I know, we've almost always had a separate solicitor for board of adjustment. When I came on board as mayor, I saw some conflict, I guess, between the city solicitor serving two masters, if you will, the council and the planning commission. So we separated that. And now we've got the city solicitor position as articulated in the job description here. Serves the Board of Commissioners, serves the city administration, building and licensing. We have a separate attorney for the planning commission. I'm just asking, do you have any comments on our system? We're not at the point where we're evaluating it, be honest with you, but I'm just giving you the opportunity to give me any feedback to.
Well, I think that's the appropriate way to deal with it. And because with my other towns, we don't represent the board of adjustment, the planning commission. And the reason why you can't, at least it's my opinion, in fact, you have Max Walton, who's your interim city solicitor now. When we have board adjustment issues or planning commission issues, we contact him to handle that. And the reason being is, if the board of justice and planning commission, again, I don't know all the setup of your code yet, but if I represent them, I can't, because you're ultimately probably going to be reviewing the decision, I can't then put on a different hat and say, well, I think the planning commission got it wrong or right, when I was the one giving the opinion. So I think having separate councils is probably necessary, and I don't think one person can represent all those, because ultimately, I'm going to represent the council. And if I represented the lower body before, I don't know how I could then represent you and say, well, yeah, because the decision may be that Nate, their decision's wrong. So but if I assisted them in any way with that, how can I, again, it's a conflict of interest at that point. So I don't think, you know, I think the system you have up now, for how you explain it, is probably the appropriate. is probably the appropriate way to handle it.
Very good. Thank you for your insight. Commissioner Markert?
I would just like to answer a kind of related question with regard to conflicts of, conflict of interest situations or whatever. And with regard to primarily, with, within, I guess, in the realm of land use. With your experience, I assume, you know, that you've had contact with, I'll just say, the real estate community or whatever, have wanted to find that? And how, in, you know, how do you had to deal with that in terms of representing, representing towns that those things may overlap or whatever?
Well, again, Delaware's small.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, it's small. But I will say this, I've never had a problem with that. And again, my, my partner and I's law firm, we're pretty fortunate that we've always been pretty focused on what we do. You know, most firms do real estate, bankruptcies, whatever. We don't handle any real estate matter. We don't do settlements. We don't do any of that, okay? So though we know a lot of people in the real estate community, we have no ties to any of them, okay? Now, is there a possibility we've represented a former realtor in a license matter because they did something wrong? Something along those lines? But we really don't have a close tie of, you know, we get our settlements from John Doe over here, so we may want to hedge our bets. So you're not going to have that problem with us. That, yeah, we may know a lot of people in the community. And again, I've lived here 59 years, so there's probably, but I don't, unless there's, I've represented someone specifically, that's not going to be an issue for me.
Okay.
Hi?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes. Mr. Morris, I think in the next couple of years, we're probably going to be looking at revising some of our codes here, our city codes. As a matter of fact, starting next month, we're looking at a mixed-use code revision, if you will, or addition. And I'm wondering if you have experience in that, and how you think you could help us, guide us through that job?
Yeah, well, that's an issue that we deal with constantly. A lot of times, with the towns I represent, we realized that the code hadn't been amended for years on end. And in fact, one of my small towns now, we have, it was suggested when I was speaking to the mayor, that we're going to create a committee to not only go over the town code, but the town charter. Because the town charter is the bible for the town, okay? Unfortunately, the town just can't change the town charter. You have to go to the legislative process with the state of Delaware. So we're doing that now with at least two towns. We've created a committee. They have a couple council people on it. They've got a couple public members that they're probably going to do. And then I'll be involved, you know, not on a daily basis on the committee aspect of it. But if they say, well, what about this change? You think that's something we can do? I have input. Now, again, with all my other towns, I don't know how City Rehabith deals with it, but I draft all the ordinances and stuff like that. And usually, when I do that, that's when I catch things like, this is not good. We, you know, we'll deal with this ordinance now, but we may want to come back to it. Because these problems may be cropping back up over and over again unless we make those changes. So I think that's a great suggestion. I think the code revision is a must. And I think you create a committee, and then, which I could be a part of as well. And then you just go, the people go through the code and see what's outdated. A lot of times, a lot of stuff's outdated. And then you figure that out. The committee makes the suggestion, hey, we want to change this. We, you know, put it on for an ordinance, consider it an open council, just like everything else. So yeah, I'm pretty involved in that, and I think I could help you with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just ask just a side question?
Commissioner Markert?
I was on, I was on the planning commission for a number of years, and if I, my memory is hazy, but it was either town of Daggsboro or Frankfurt, I think had gone through code revision. Are you aware of that?
I'm not. I know the town of Daggsboro, we're considering doing that now. Frankfurt, I've never represented, but that's a possibility. Like I said, Bethany's pretty proactive with theirs. They have commissioners to get involved and make an effort to try to bring their code up to current. And it's important to do that, because you just can't, hey, just because we drafted it 25 years ago, doesn't mean it's applicable now. So I think that's just an important thing that any municipality should do. They should be looking into making sure their codes are up to date.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you. That's right. Commissioner Good?
I, I've noticed that you're managing, I guess, is it about four towns simultaneously right now with that Ridgeville and?
Yes. Ridgeville, Camden, Daggsboro, and I do, I still do, even though my partner's the city solicitor, I still do a lot of work for the city of Bethany as well.
Yeah, I'm wondering, especially because I think in a lot of cases, the councils and commissions get overwhelmed when we get, I mean, we've received what looked like legal briefs, and with links to past cases which are, in theory, set the precedent. Are you, do you feel that you've had some experience in summarizing and simplifying the legal advice you try to send to? I mean, we're laypeople. I mean, I could be wrong. I'm not sure any of us holds a J.D. degree. Yeah, I think that that would be a truthful statement. We're not, none of us is an attorney. So I wanted to know if that's something, well, have you ever been asked to summarize and simplify, and you feel you are skilled at doing that?
Absolutely, yes and yes, okay? And hopefully this, my theory on things sometimes is, keep it simple, stupid. You know, I could write a 100-page brief to answer a question when it can be done in one page, okay? I'm not going to waste my time or waste the town's money of doing something that you really don't need, okay? If there's a specific question, I'm going to answer it in a summarized form, unless someone said to me, no, Greg, we want to have every case that you've looked at or whatever. But sometimes, again, that may not be beneficial because it's time-consuming, and it could be costly. And so I, again, I, for all the towns I represent, I work at their pleasure. So I do what they want me to do within reason. So if they say, Greg, just provide a quick synopsis, done deal. I prefer that.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I'm not in charge here, but I even, I only joined the board September 20th, but I have received legal briefs which are so lengthy and verbose, to be honest, that I feel, yeah, there's no person who has time to go through, you know, a 10-page document with links, you know, well, attachments. So I appreciate that. And I, last, I noticed, so do you work with Max Walton's Wilmington firm a great deal?
A lot. Like I said, if normally if we have a conflict or if there's something with some of our towns, we'll contact Max. And some from his firm will, you know, help us out. But we have a great relationship with Max Walton. He's a great guy. Really think the world of him.
So that would, your arrangement has been in the past to sort of use Max's firm on retainer or?
No, no retainer. What happens i- if there's a board of adjustment hearing in Bethany, and our planning commission will, and the council already knows this, that we can't represent them. So usually, the town manager will call us and said, you know, do you have a recommendation? He kind of already knows what our answer is now. And, and so Max is employed by the town to do, to run the hearing, to write the written decision of the board of adjustment and planning commission. And he's helped us out. We've used a couple other people when he couldn't do it. But Max, like I say, he's a great guy, helps us out when we need it.
Right. You know, there are times that a new or novel legal issue comes up with opposing opinions. And how would you approach an issue such as this to ensure the city is best protected and that it proceeds in an appropriate manner?
Well, you know, unfortunately, sometimes there's always a gray area. It's not a clear answer. So sometimes you have to, you know, give your best opinion on what the question is, and try to predict if it's a legal issue, how do you think a particular court will deal with it? And then that's where the research comes into play, that you look at the case law, and based upon that, if the answer's clear, it's clear. You know, there are certain things, you know, growing up on a farm, you know, one of the things my parents passed on to me is common sense. Usually, that will get you through the day a lot of the times, okay? What's your gut feeling? Because the law is meant to be fair and meant to accomplish a task that everyone's getting a fair shake or whatever. But it's supposed to make sense. But there are times when you, there is that gray area that is going to require whoever you hire as an attorney to look at it and then give you an opinion, well, I think this is how the court will come off. And sometimes, again, there's a two-sided coin. I mean, there's arguments on both sides, but you try to give the council at least your best opinion on how it will shake out if it gets into a courtroom. Again, I deal with that a lot. And there are times where judges have made a decision where I thought it was clear and it wasn't. But usually, you can get a good prediction by, and I will say this, depending on, for example, if you're interpreting an ordinance, you know, usually you can get a good idea. But sometimes when you look at the ordinance, you're like, holy mackerel, this is clearly ambiguous. So then you're leaving it into the hands of someone else to decide the town's fate when maybe they could have dealt with it. And, for example, he gave of redoing your ordinance and make sure they're clear, succinct, so someone can't question them later. Everyone can question, you can sue anybody for anything at this point. That's reality. But the question is, can you defend your position? And ultimately, I'll be able to give you at least what my position would be on a particular issue when faced with it.
Thank you. Before you start, you know, we're short three commissioners today. They couldn't make it, unfortunately. But if you don't mind, could I add Taylor to the mix? Do you have any question you'd like to ask Mr. Morris?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Really, you know, in local government, communication is key in everything that we do. What kind of processes or procedures would you follow in communicating with the board of commissioners, with city staff, like myself and others on staff? How do you keep your clients informed to essentially avoid surprises on ongoing issues, things of that nature?
Well, usually with most of my towns, my suggestion is I deal with one person. Normally, it's the town manager, okay? Because you're the person who's running the town. Rather than getting 10 different emails from me that hopefully the council people will reach out to you, and then you'll be my intermediary. So I will always, if you call me, I prefer email, just because my memory's not the best sometimes, and if I have it in writing, it works best for me. You send me a question, this is, we get these issues all the time. I get an email or a call from the town manager and say, hey, I foresee we're going to be dealing with this issue. Can you start looking into it? Things along with those lines. So, I mean, I'm more than happy to talk to anyone at any time. But sometimes, the management style of, so I'm not overwhelmed by getting five, six different emails that if we have one person, just like the four-year coordinator, she should handle that. Ultimately, she can ask me for advice, but she shouldn't be delegating stuff to other. She's the four-year coordinator, and she can seek the advice, but that's the process. And I think that that process has worked well for me for other towns, that normally, you know, the town manager will reach out and say, hey, you know, one of the councilperson has raised this issue. The bigger thing that I like is that the town manager will reach out to me before the meeting, because sometimes something may come up the day before and to give me a heads up, hey, we're going to have 50 people show up tomorrow with this issue, even though it may not be on the agenda or something. So again, that's forethought of always letting me know if you foresee a problem that's going to come up. So I'm not sitting there one night, and then all of a sudden, someone asks me a question, and I'm totally caught off guard to buy it. But a constant contact, like I said, unless I'm in court, I respond pretty quickly. I don't put stuff off.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Do you have anything else you'd like?
I was just going to ask just one question.
Yes.
If that's all right. And this sort of pertains, you touched on this in terms of how you research and all that kind of thing. But in the instance, and I presume this is not all that frequent or anything, if we're faced with something that really has little or no precedent, how do you approach that? And have you had experience in situations like that?
I have. So if there's not a lot of case law, or if there's not a statute, dealing with a, dealing with a particular issue or an ordinance or the town charter, that's a rarity, okay, that there wouldn't be anything else. Now, I will say this, just because Delaware's so small, that there may not be a lot of case law on a particular issue. That doesn't prevent us from looking at other states that have dealt with it. Because then you can at least see both sides of the argument and how maybe how certain courts have come down. So if there's no legal precedence, it's still our obligation to try to get you the best answer of how it may shake out if it gets into a courtroom. So again, though there may not be a particular case in Delaware, we can look outside of that and say, hey, this is how Maryland, New Jersey. Because again, a lot of times, it's, you know, particular municipalities deal with, even though they have different procedures and whatever, they deal with the same things, same issues. And though a particular town may not have dealt with it, I probably can find other circumstances and then give you the best, you know, legal opinion I can on what I have access to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders?
I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Good?
I want to know, have you had any reliance on arbitration in some of the towns? You've, like, have you suggested that the parties consider arbitration? Just because you've probably heard our legal fees are running up close to almost, I believe, almost $700,000 a year, which is just colossal and is, represents too large a, well, I think it's about 2% of our annual budget at this point. So I just wanted to know if that's something you've been able to bring about in some of the other municipalities in Delaware where you've worked?
Absolutely. Alternative dispute resolution is a big thing. We have a lot of judges who have now retired, and that's what they do. They bring experience to an alternative. So it could either be an arbitration where the person actually is hearing all the evidence and then makes a decision. The other option is a mediation where the former judge or whoever the arbitrator may be, just tries to get the parties to some sort of resolution. I just did a mediation for a town issue that resolved it that could have caused the town substantial time in litigation, substantial cost of litigation. So that's always an option. Now, sometimes that's not an option. For example, if the board makes a decision, they appeal it, or the council makes a decision, and it gets appealed to the superior court, because there's, by statute, there's certain where things go, that some things can't get resolved through that process if both sides are entrenched. But I'm a firm believer in alternative dispute resolution, because it does save time, it does save money. And then normally, you kind of know who's involved. If you pick a certain arbitrator who may be experienced in A, B, or C, you kind of know how they feel on certain things, just because of the time on the bench, and maybe we look at opinions they've given before. So that's always a viable option. Yes, I've had the experience with that.
Thank you.
Very good.
And I will say this, I mean, again, because even in criminal civil litigation, 99% of my cases, probably 90% of my cases, all resolved before trial, usually, okay?
That's an impressive record.
Okay, so, and the reason, and usually it's because when it gets judgment day, everyone finally faces, oh, man, I may have to pay X, you know, or guys charged with crime, I may have to spend the next 10 years in jail. You know, everyone's firm with their beliefs until it becomes crunch time, where either you're presenting a case to a jury or to a judge. And so, you know, most cases do get resolved, but some can't, and they go to trial. And that's what the system's there for.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Last chance for the commissioners, any questions? If not, we thank you. What we'd like to do is offer you the floor again to see if you have any additional feedback or input for us based on what, either what you've heard or thought additionally?
I don't necessarily have anything great to offer at this point, other than the fact, like I said in the beginning, this is what I want to do. This is the area, the law that I want to start to focus on. I think it's a great opportunity, and it would be a pleasure if I have that opportunity. So I'm just asking. So I'm just asking that you consider my past history, you know, my experience, and hopefully the comments I made today, and give me a shot, and I'll, I'll fight hard for you. That's all I can say.
Thank you. And, and if we looked at you favorably, what is your timeline for coming on board?
Whenever you want me. I'll make it work on my end. Again, I'd rather know sooner rather than later. And the reason being is if it goes into the new year, I'm, like, I'm, I'll probably go back to the office today and set court dates for various things. So the sooner I can know that, I know when the meetings are, I can let my legal secretary know, hey, we've got to block these dates off. Because usually with most towns, I get the, the calendar, at least for the council meetings, for the entire year. Now, again, most of them are at nighttime at Monday, so I normally have no conflicts with court, because courts normally shut, shut down at 5:00. But in this circumstance, I would need to make sure I'm available on Friday afternoon. Again, normally I don't have any conflicts with that. There may be some small matters in the morning. The only issue will be on Mondays, so I'll just need to make sure, and as far as in advance, that I can get those matters either rescheduled or block those dates off. So the sooner the better for me, so, so I can, but, but I could start immediately, whenever you need it.
And again, after this meeting, today at some point, I'll send you our public meeting calendar, just, just so you have it. I don't think we have an answer right now, but
Understood.
Perhaps by the end of the meeting, we would have an answer as to what are our next steps and what is our timeline for making a decision. So we just don't know right now.
Understand.
Before you leave and before we go to the next bit of business, I want to go to public comment. Walter, you have anything you want to say? And Walter's shaking his head, no. Thank you, Walter. With that, we will bid you adieu, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Or you're welcome to, to sit in the public's chair and watch us, watch us go into executive session.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice meeting all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. With that, we'll go to Agenda Item B of the meeting, which is to entertain an executive session for the purpose of discussing the qualifications of individual candidates for employment as the in-house city solicitor as permitted by the Freedom of Information Act, referenced in the agenda. As noted earlier, we have the opportunity to go into executive session out of the private, public eye for this particular type of meeting in executive session. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. What I'd like to do is read the entirety of the agenda language and entertain a motion.
Second?
No.
Not yet. Okay, you want to read it?
Yes, I, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of
Discussing the qualifications of individual candidates for employment as the in-house city solicitor as permitted by 29 Delaware C-10004B1.
We have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Suzanne Good and a second by Commissioner Bunky Marker to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing qualifications of individual candidates for employment as the in-house city solicitor as permitted by Freedom of Information Act, referenced in the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? And we will be going into executive session. I would like to make a preface before we leave this room, because we'll go into the caucus room to conduct the executive session. The duration of the executive session is unknown. No actions will be taken in executive session. We will come back into public session following the executive session to adjourn, and no actions will be expected back in public session. But we will entertain additional public comment. Walter, are you going to come back for anything? All righty, thank you very much. With that, we are entering recess for reconvening in the caucus room for executive session. Thank you.
Give me a nod when you're ready, Brent.
He nodded.
Is that the nod? Okay, thumbs up. Thank you very much. With that, I'll take a motion to come out of executive session back into public session.
So moved.
Motion to come out of public...
Yeah, okay.
Out of private session to public session.
Into public session.
Second.
And so we have a motion by Commissioner Mark Saunders and a second by Commissioner Bunkie Markert to come out of executive session and back into public session. Are there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are now back in public session. We'd like to entertain a motion to bring in or not bring in candidate A or B for interview for in-house attorney.
I'll make the motion as stated.
I need to know whether you want to bring them in or not bring them in. Or you can say motion to bring in candidate A or B.
Yeah.
Actually, we need to do it one at a time, right?
You can make a motion for one or the other.
Let's do... Adjust your motion to bring in candidate A and then let's do B if that's all right.
Okay. I'll make a motion to invite candidate A in for a...
Interview for in-house attorney.
Interview for in-house attorney.
And a second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bunkie Markert now to...
Give me a nod when you're ready, Brant.
He nodded.
Is that the nod? Okay, thumbs up. Thank you very much. With that, I'll take a motion to come out of executive session back into public session.
So moved.
Motion to come out of public?
Yeah.
Not a private session, it's a public session?
Into public session.
Second.
And so we have a motion by Commissioner Mark Saunders and a second by Commissioner Bunky Markert to come out of executive session and back into public session. Are there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we are now back in public session. We'd like to entertain a motion to bring in or not bring in candidate A or B for interview for in-house attorney.
I'll make the motion as stated.
I need to know whether you want to bring him in or not bring him in. Or you can say motion to bring in candidate A or B.
Yeah.
Actually, we need to do it one at a time, right?
You can make a motion for one or the other.
Let's do, adjust your motion to bring in candidate A and then let's do B if that's all right.
Okay. I'll make a motion to invite candidate A in for a...
Interview for in-house attorney.
Interview for in-house attorney.
Second.
And a second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bunky Markert now to, and a second by Commissioner Mark Saunders to bring in candidate A for interview for in-house attorney. Is there any discussion? I will be voting against that because I don't know that I need to give a reason, but I will be voting against it. Are there any...
Mayor, may I ask you?
Yes.
Do we want to make a distinction between the candidate who is licensed to practice in Delaware and the one who is not, or we're just gonna...
No, we're just candidate A and B right now.
So could, okay. I'm not clear based on, you know, we didn't designate who was A and B. So I need to know...
Candidate A is the first one we received.
Okay.
That you already publicly announced whether or not she met the criteria. With that, individual roll call vote, Commissioner Saunders?
No.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Commissioner Markert?
No.
And the mayor votes no, so we are not inviting candidate A in for interview. If you would redo the motion for candidate B, please?
Yes, I make a motion that we invite candidate B for a, an interview...
For in-house attorney.
For in-house attorney.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Bunky Markert and a second by Commissioner Suzanne Good to bring in candidate B for interview for in-house attorney. Is there any discussion? I will be voting against that also because her, primarily for her lack of experience. Anybody else before we go to roll call vote? If not, I'll start with Suzanne Good.
Aye, based on her experience not being as directly related to municipal government, but she has outstanding credentials, so I'd like to at least interview her.
Commissioner Markert?
I vote no, basically for not meeting the requirements of the application.
Commissioner Saunders?
I'd vote aye. I would just hate to miss something that we may turn out that we like.
And the chair votes no, and that's a two-two, and so the motion fails. Thank you very much. With that, what I'd like to do is, we're not, we mentioned earlier, we're not prepared to make an offer to the independent contractor solicitor that we talked to earlier, but would you please give a synopsis of the next steps and what the timeline is so that we can determine how to move forward?
Certainly, Mayor. So all along throughout this process, we have expected that the new solicitor would begin their services between January and February of 2025. So ultimately, the path forward, while the application for both contract and in-house solicitor are open until filled, what I would expect is that we could possibly schedule either a special meeting and properly agendize consideration of Mr. Morris as our next city solicitor, based on feedback, you know, depending on how you felt today went. And one of the next logical times that we could make a decision would be the January regular meeting, but if we do want to speed that up as Mr. Morris had asked so that he can make sure that his calendar works with the city of Rehoboth Beach, we could look at scheduling a special meeting sooner for that consideration. But of course, applications could still come in. Right now, it is open until filled.
Well, when did you resubmit, repost the job notice? Do you recall?
That was after the December 9th meeting.
So say December 10th plus?
Yes.
And now we are December 19th, so it's been less than a week and a half. And have we gotten any responses?
The one in-house application.
But no further independent contractors.
Correct. So the original deadline, the position ran for about 30 days, I think it was more like 28 days, and it ended December 2nd. So the next really logical end would be January 2nd.
Personally, I'm doubtful that we're going to get any more applicants. You know, we're a small state and that they need to avoid potential conflicts of interest, I think limits who we get. I am very comfortable with Mr. Morris based on his interview today, and I don't know how to, the best to get the input from the other three commissioners, other than I would be comfortable, I guess, working out a date for this on a future meeting. Maybe it's, maybe it's put on a special meeting after the January workshop, and then maybe that's the opportunity that the other commissioners get to have any input on it. But I'm, I'm ready to go and move forward. So I would like, like feedback or consensus among the other commissioners up here.
Mayor, I'll start by saying I agree with you, and I think we should move forward on that as quickly as we could.
Anybody else? Suzanne?
Well, my only, I don't really have a fully formed opinion of Mr. Morris, although, yeah, we did interview him. As you noted in his cover letter, he is a precedent in the other towns for whom he works is sometimes he doesn't have to be present at meeting, you know, the entirety of the meeting or at the meeting at all. And I've heard anecdotally that then questions that arise can be run by the independent contractor, which he would be, to seek legal advice afterwards. And I'm wondering if you, by, by being favorable to him, are you suggesting it would be just business as usual where you would make sure barring illness on his part or his inability to have one of his partners? He mentioned he has basically a partner plus two associates who work at his firm. Are you willing to consider not having him be a presence for the entire duration of all our meetings and willing to consider some meetings where there isn't, there aren't particular legal ramifications, not having him be present at the meetings?
Am I willing to consider it? Yes. The decision would be made on the first level with the mayor and city manager, and, or we could also bring it to this table. So you're not getting a definitive answer today.
Because, you know, we've had independent contractors in the past, and it seems to run up our legal bills to, you know, a high level. So I'm hoping because we, you know, have this opportunity to make a fresh start, whether it's, you know, whether it's an independent contractor or an in-house counsel, the in-house counsel by definition is sort of an attempt to rein in legal costs a little bit.
Well, I look at that as a separate question because that is, that question is applicable to no matter who we decide to bring in. So right now, the question is, is he the candidate that we want to make an offer to? And I, my answer, as I indicated, is yes.
And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just wanted to address Commissioner Good's point. This meeting is a great example. Today, we don't have an attorney here, and the meetings went very well. So I think definitely depending on the topics, we could look at that.
And the only comment I have is, I would like our absent colleagues to weigh, to be able to weigh in on this. And obviously, they can look at the, the meeting, you know, the taped, you know, the tape of the, that's not a tape, but, you know, the, the meeting online, but, you know, to have an occasion where we can discuss that or whatever, you know, in advance of a second interview or part of a second interview or whatever, that's really my own, my own issue.
Well, I...
I mean, I know we can do it with the four of us, but I...
Well, I would, I would suggest that we put this on the December 9th workshop for continued discussion and, or...
January 6th.
I'm sorry, January...
January 6th.
Yeah.
Whatever it is. January 6th workshop, maybe a special meeting afterwards so we can take a vote, and that, that would lend an opportunity. He doesn't necessarily even need to be here, but...
Right.
That would lend the conversation for them, all seven of us, to be able to move forward and discuss whether we want to hire him or not. But that would keep things moving forward and even possibly bring him on board as of the end of the day, January 6th. January 6th. Are we okay with that path?
True.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything else that you want to offer, so, for anything?
Not this time.
All righty. There's no members of the public in the room, so otherwise, we would offer opportunity for additional citizen comment. And with that, there being no further business, I adjourn this meeting at 10:42 a.m. Thank you very much.